Wheels spin soft through the galley's glow Whispers of night where the stardust flows Heartbeats echo, a rhythm untamed A love so vast it can't be named Moonlight bends, it calls our names In this endless cosmic game Ride with me through the skies so wide Cosmic bicycle, our love's our guide Stars above, they light our way Forever night, forever we'll stay Your laughter rings like a comet's song The world dissolves, we just glide along A million stars, they watch, they gleam Chasing love in a midnight dream Pedals turning, hearts are burning Constellations keep returning Every mile, every sigh, we're infinite beneath the sky Ride with me through the skies so wide Cosmic bicycle, our love's our guide Stars above, they light our way Forever night, forever we'll stay Neon whispers trace the tide The ocean hums where dreams collide Waves like silk, they kiss the shore We stand as one, needing nothing more Colors melt into the breeze A canvas drawn by moonlit seas Ocean skyline, hearts align Lights and waves in perfect time Your hand in mine, the world unwinds Ocean skyline, love defined The stars reflect in liquid gold Stories untold, yet they unfold The wind, it laughs, the sea replies Our shadows dance beneath the skies Ocean skyline, hearts align Lights and waves in perfect time Your hand in mine, the world unwinds Ocean skyline, love defined Each ripple sings a soft refrain A fleeting world we can't contain But here and now, it's ours to keep This moment tied so fast, so deep Fingers smudged with ink in time Your laugh a song I couldn't write The sky wore gray like a bar coat And the clouds whispered what you wrote Cloudy Polaroid snapshots stuck in my mind Faded edges, but your face still shines Forever in my pocket, forever in my heart A moment on paper, a love that won't part Streetlights blinked like they were shy Our footsteps tangled, you and I A flash of light, a shudder sigh Captured you beneath that cloudy sky We framed the night in black and white But the love bled through a quiet fight The rain tried to wash it, the wind tried to tear But memories like these don't disappear Every photo's a time machine Every frame holds what might have been Cloudy Polaroid snapshots stuck in my mind Faded edges, but your face still shines Forever in my pocket, forever in my heart A moment on paper, a love that won't part Moonlight whispers on the floor Soft shadows dance near the door Your smile, it glows, it glows so bright Strum the strings, oh Soft and slow, midnight sings It starts to flow Laughter rings, our love will grow Your fingers hum a gentle tune The stars lean close, they watch the room The world is quiet, it's just us two Strum and sway The night won't stay But here we are And that's okay Strum the strings, oh Soft and slow, midnight sings It starts to flow Laughter rings, our love will grow The ukulele hums like a secret breeze Notes floating softly through the trees Hearts in rhythm, never freeze As the sun turns gold in the sky Over the town, let's fly into the moonlight The lights of the city twinkling like soft velvet dreams The colors fade away and melt into the sky Soft and silent in a velvet high And the world turns When the dawn arrives, my dreams begin to fade away The lights of the city twinkling like soft velvet dreams The colors fade away and melt into the sky Soft and silent in a velvet high And your eyes, oh, they melt into the sky And the sun fades into the night In a velvet horizon Tiny cafe corner glowing Steam rises, tracing where dreams begin Two cups, two hearts, no need to spin Under city lights, we're caught in the flow Your smile's the only map I know Midnight cafe glow Midnight cafe glow Outside, the rain hums a quiet tune Streetlights blink like stars on the moon Inside, your laughter fills the room Warm hands meet, the night won't fade Every sip a memory made Under city lights, we're caught in the flow Your smile's the only map I know Midnight cafe glow Midnight cafe glow Time's a thief, but tonight is kind Every second's ours, let's not rewind The world's asleep, but we're alive Late night metro hums its tune Seats are empty, stars in bloom City whispers, shadows play Glowing lights keep dark at bay Windows blur like painted streams Lost in neon, chasing dreams Silent metro, hearts collide In the stillness, worlds reside Unspoken love, a fleeting glance Under the glow, we take a chance Fingers tap on frosted glass Each stop echoes, moments pass Your reflection, soft and near Words unspoken yet so clear Every station, a heartbeat slows Every signal, the longing grows Do you feel it, that pulls a spark? In this quiet after dark Silent metro, hearts collide In the stillness, worlds reside Unspoken love, a fleeting glance Under the glow, we take a chance Silent metro, hearts collide In the stillness, worlds reside Unspoken love, a fleeting glance Under the glow, we take a chance Sakura whispers to the ground Neon dreams spin all around Silent hearts in a city sound Under the glow of electric skies Pink petals fall like fleeting sighs Lanterns hum secrets in their light Shadows stretch, holding the night tight Do you see it too? This quiet blue A love that stirs beneath the moon Cherry nightfall, soft and slow Whispers only the dark can know Underneath the neon rain Hearts collide, no need to explain Fingers trace constellations near your eyes A universe so clear The world fades, it's just you and me Drifting softly like sakura trees Do you feel it now? This gentle fire A spark that grows, climbing higher Cherry nightfall, soft and slow Whispers only the dark can know Underneath the neon rain Hearts collide, no need to explain Lanterns hum like fireflies Soft lights spills, it fills the skies Steps echo on cobblestone, we're not alone Paper wishes drift on streams Fingers lock, we're caught in dreams Your shadow dances close to mine, it feels divine The world fades to a quiet hue Only lanterns, me and you Lantern glow it paints the night Golden warmth, it feels so right Holding hands, the world below Fades away in lantern glow Curtains drawn by the moon's shy hand Whispers trace where stars once stand Your laughter blooms a melody, it sets me free Amber rivers light the way Guiding hearts that went astray Your touch a map to somewhere safe A warm embrace Lantern pink paints the night Golden noon, there's a light Going hands, the world below Fades away in lantern glow The skies a canvas streaked in gold Soft city breeze, stories unfold Your laughter's a song so light, so free It dances like shadows beneath the marquee Twilight balcony, just you and me The universe held in your quiet spree No need for words The silence speaks in this fleeting glow Time softly reads Your hair catches whispers, the wind shy kiss A moment like this, pure fleeting bliss The hum of the city, a love by near But all I hear's your heartbeat, crystal clear And the stars start to peek, they know the game Twilight plays tricks, but we're the same Twilight balcony, just you and me The universe held in your quiet spree No need for words The silence speaks in this fleeting glow Time softly reads Streetlights flicker like distant dreams The world's still turning, or so it seems But here we are, a pause in space Your hand in mine, our perfect place Midnight whispers whirl in the steam Two cups between us like a quiet dream Rain taps the glass in a gentle flow Your smile melts the dark, it's a coffee glow Coffee glow, where the hours slow Raindrops fall, but we both know This moment's ours, let the night bestow Hearts unspoken in the coffee glow Your hand traces rings on the table's edge Words fall softly like a secret pledge The storm hums low, a lullaby's tune Your laughter lights up the dim lit room Coffee glow, where the hours slow Raindrops fall, but we both know This moment's ours, let the night bestow Hearts unspoken in the coffee glow Every sip, a spark, a spark so sweet Rain's rhythm keeps our hearts in beat We don't need the dawn to break the spell Here in this glow, we know too well Coffee glow, where the hours slow Raindrops fall, but we both know This moment's ours, let the night bestow Hearts unspoken in the coffee glow Hearts unspoken in the coffee glow. Pastel skies melt into the night. Candy clouds, love will feel so right. We're chasing stars, no need to slow. Sugar lights paint the streets a glow. Sugar lights, sugar lights, they're shining for us. Every color, every hue, a magical trust. Sugar lights, sugar lights, they sparkle and play. Hold my hand, let's dance through the sweet ballet. Bubblegum pink on the corner store sign. Lemon drop yellow, your hand in mine. Neon whispers, secrets unfold. The city's alive, its story told. Step by step, we're weaving dreams in a world of cotton candy string. Sugar lights, sugar lights, they're shining for us. Every color, every hue, a magical trust. Sugar lights, sugar lights, they sparkle and play. Hold my hand, let's dance through the sweet ballet. Mint green laughter, lilac skies. Your smile's brighter than firefly eyes. Peppermint kisses, the night is ours. We're a constellation among these stars. Sugar lights, sugar lights, they're shining for us. Every color, every hue, a magical trust. Sugar lights, sugar lights, they sparkle and play. Hold my hand, let's dance through the sweet ballet. Sugar lights, sugar lights, they're shining for us. Every color, every hue, a magical trust. Sugar lights, sugar lights, they sparkle and play. Hold my hand, let's dance through the sweet ballet. Footsteps whisper on the glistening street. Umbrellas sway to the rhythm of our beat. City lights glow like stars at our feet. Crystal raindrops fall, but we don't mind. Underneath this shelter, your hand in mine. Every drop's a melody, soft and kind. Crystal raindrops fall and the world unwinds. The air is cool, but your smile feels warm. Rain taps a tune that we both transform. Your laugh's a fire in this gentle storm. Close enough to hear your heart. Closer still, we're worlds apart. Crystal raindrops fall, but we don't mind. Underneath this shelter, your hand in mine. Every drop's a melody, soft and kind. Crystal raindrops fall and the world unwinds. Puddles ripple as we step in time. Each reflection's a fleeting rhyme. Moments like this, rare and sublime. Neon whispers paint the air. Fingers tangle in your hair. Electric skies above us hum. Our hearts beat like a distant drum. Drift with me through neon streams. Hold me tight, we're lost in dreams. Colors blur, they glow, they gleam. This is our neon daydream. Shadows dance on midnight walls. City echoes, distant calls. Your touch feels like static light, burning softly through the night. Falling deeper, no escape. Reality bends, shifts its shape. Drift with me through neon streams. Hold me tight, we're lost in dreams. Colors blur, they glow, they gleam. This is our neon daydream. Flicker, shimmer, pulse and fade. We're the story that neon made. Every step a fleeting trace. In this city, we leave no space.
Beneath the sky that knows no end, I hear your voice, my heart ascends. The city hums a quiet song. Your hand in mine, where I belong. The lights above, they seem to wink. Do they know what we think? Starlit promises whispered low, underneath the moonlight glow. Gentle smiles, the world fades out. Your love's the only thing I'm about. Warm city air, it wraps around. Your laughter is my favorite sound. We trace the stars, a map of dreams, forever closer than it seems. Starlit promises whispered low, underneath the moonlight glow. Gentle smiles, the world fades out. Your love's the only thing I'm about. Each word you say, a spark of flame. The stars themselves might call your name. I'll follow you through time and space. Our vows will never be erased. A silver moon up above so high. Glowing whispers in the sky. I tiptoe softly through the dew. A secret world I never knew. Petals shine, a radiant hue. Every step feels born anew. Midnight garden, hearts collide. Blossoms glowing side by side. Hold my hand, don't let it go. In this light, love starts to grow. Fireflies dancing dreamy streams. Lantern stars, they spark my dreams. A breeze that hums a lullaby. Our laughter floats, it can't deny. Shadows waltz, the nights embrace. Every moment, time gives chase. Midnight garden, hearts collide. Blossoms glowing side by side. Hold my hand, don't let it go. In this light, love starts to grow. Wheels spin soft through the galley's glow. Whispers of night where the star dust flows. Heartbeats echo, a rhythm untamed. A love so vast it can't be named. Moonlight bends, it calls our names in this endless cosmic game. Ride with me through the skies so wide. Cosmic bicycle, our loves are guide. Stars above, they light our way. Forever night, forever we'll stay. Your laughter rings like a comet's song. The world dissolves, we just glide along. A million stars, they watch, they gleam. Chasing love in a midnight dream. Petals turning, hearts are burning. Constellations keep returning. Every mile, every sigh, we're infinite beneath the sky. Ride with me through the skies so wide. Cosmic bicycle, our loves are guide. Stars above, they light our way. Forever night, forever we'll stay. Neon whispers trace the tide. The ocean hums where dreams collide. Waves like silk, they kiss the shore. We stand as one, needing nothing more. Colors melt into the breeze. A canvas drawn by moonlit seas. Ocean skyline, hearts align. Lights and waves in perfect time. Your hand in mine, the world unwinds. Ocean skyline, love defined. The stars reflect in liquid gold. Stories untold, yet they unfold. The wind, it laughs, the sea replies. Our shadows dance beneath the skies. Ocean skyline, hearts align. Lights and waves in perfect time. Your hand in mine, the world unwinds. Ocean skyline, love defined. Each ripple sings a soft refrain. A fleeting world we can't contain. But here and now, it's ours to keep. This moment's tied so fast, so deep. Fingers smudged with ink and tinta. Fingers smudged with ink and time. Your laugh a song I couldn't write. The sky wore gray like a bar code. And the clouds whispered what you wrote. Cloudy Polaroid snapshots stuck in my mind, faded edges, but your face still shines forever in my pocket, forever in my heart. A moment on paper, a love that won't part. Streetlights blink like they were shy. Our footsteps tangled, you and I. A flash of light, a shudder sigh, captured you beneath that cloudy sky. We framed the night in black and white, but the love bled through a quiet fight. The rain tried to wash it, the wind tried to tear, but memories like these don't disappear. Every photo's a time machine. Every frame holds what might have been. Cloudy Polaroid snapshots stuck in my mind, faded edges, but your face still shines forever in my pocket, forever in my heart. A moment on paper, a love that won't part. Moonlight whispers on the floor. Soft shadows dance near the door. Your smile, it glows, it glows so bright. Strum the strings, oh, soft and slow. Midnight sings, it starts to flow. Laughter rings, our love will grow. Your fingers hum a gentle tune. The stars lean close, they watch the room. The world is quiet, it's just us two. Strum and sway, sway and sway. The night won't stay, but here we are. And that's okay. Strum the strings, oh, soft and slow. Midnight sings, it starts to flow. Laughter rings, our love will grow. The ukulele hums like a secret breeze, notes floating softly through the trees. Hearts in rhythm, never freeze. As the sun turns gold in the sky, over the town, let's fly into the moonlight. The lights of the city twinkling like soft velvet dreams. The colors fade away and melt into the sky, soft and silent in a velvet haze. And the world turns when the dawn arrives. My dreams begin to fade away. The lights of the city twinkling like soft velvet dreams. The colors fade away and melt into the sky, soft and silent in a velvet haze. And your eyes, oh, they melt into the sky and the sun fades into the night in a velvet horizon. Tiny cafe corner glowing. Steam rises, tracing where dreams begin. Two cups, two hearts, no need to spin. Under city lights, we're caught in the flow. Your smile's the only map I know. Midnight cafe glow, midnight cafe glow. Outside, the rain hums a quiet tune. Streetlights blink like stars on the moon. Inside, your laughter fills the room. Warm hands meet, the night won't fade. Every sip a memory made. Under city lights, we're caught in the flow. Your smile's the only map I know. Midnight cafe glow, midnight cafe glow. Time's a thief, but tonight is kind. Every second's ours, let's not rewind. The world's asleep, but we're alive. Late night metro hums its tune. Seats are empty, stars in bloom. City whispers, shadows play. Glowing lights keep dark at bay. Windows blur like painted streams. Lost in neon, chasing dreams. Silent metro, hearts collide. In the stillness, worlds reside. Unspoken love, a fleeting glance. Under the glow, we take a chance. Fingers tap on frosted glass. Each stop echoes, moments pass. Your reflection, soft and near. Words unspoken yet so clear. Every station, a heartbeat slows. Every signal, the longing grows. Do you feel it, the pull of spark in this quiet after dark? Silent metro, hearts collide. In the stillness, worlds reside. Unspoken love, a fleeting glance. Under the glow, we take a chance. Silent metro, hearts collide. In the stillness, worlds reside. Unspoken love, a fleeting glance. Under the glow, we take a chance. Sakura whispers to the ground. Neon dreams spin all around. Silent hearts in a city sound. Under the glow of electric skies, pink petals fall like fleeting sighs. Lanterns hum secrets in their light. Shadows stretch, holding the night tight. Do you see it too? This quiet blue, a love that stirs beneath the moon. Cherry nightfall, soft and slow, whispers only the dark can know. Underneath the neon rain, hearts collide, no need to explain. Fingers trace constellations near your eyes, a universe so clear. The world fades, it's just you and me, drifting softly like sakura trees. Do you feel it now? This gentle fire, a spark that grows, climbing higher. Cherry nightfall, soft and slow, whispers only the dark can know. Underneath the neon rain, hearts collide, no need to explain. Lanterns hum like fireflies. Soft lights spills, it fills the skies. Steps echo on cobblestone, we're not alone. Paper wishes drift on streams. Fingers lock, we're caught in dreams. Your shadow dances close to mine, it feels divine. The world fades to a quiet hue. Only lanterns, me and you. Lantern glow, it paints the night, golden warmth that feels so right. Holding hands, the world below fades away in lantern glow. Curtains drawn by the moon's shy hand. Whispers trace where stars once stand. Your laughter blooms a melody, it sets me free. Amber rivers light the way, guiding hearts that went astray. Your touch a map to somewhere safe, a warm embrace. Entering pink paints the night, golden noon, this away. Holding hands, the world below fades away in lantern glow. The sky's a canvas streaked in gold. Soft city breeze, stories Soft city breeze, stories unfold Your laughter's a song so light, so free It dances like shadows beneath the marquee Twilight balcony, just you and me The universe held in your quiet spree No need for words The silence speaks in this fleeting glow Time softly leaves Your hair catches whispers, the wind shy kiss A moment like this, pure fleeting bliss The hum of the city, a lullaby near But all I hear's your heartbeat, crystal clear When the stars start to peek, they know the game Twilight plays tricks, but we're the same Twilight balcony, just you and me The universe held in your quiet spree No need for words The silence speaks in this fleeting glow Time softly leaves Streetlights flicker like distant dreams The world's still turning, or so it seems But here we are, a pause in space Your hand in mine, our perfect place Midnight whispers swirl in the steam Two cups between us like a quiet dream Rain taps the glass in a gentle flow Your smile melts the dark, it's a coffee glow Coffee glow, where the hours slow Raindrops fall, but we both know This moment's ours, let the night bestow Hearts unspoken in the coffee glow Your hand traces rings on the table's edge Words fall softly like a secret pledge The storm hums low, a lullaby's tune Your laughter lights up the dim-lit room Coffee glow, where the hours slow Raindrops fall, but we both know This moment's ours, let the night bestow Hearts unspoken in the coffee glow Every sip, a spark, a spark so sweet Rain's rhythm keeps our hearts in beat We don't need the dawn to break the spell Here in this glow, we know too well Coffee glow, where the hours slow Raindrops fall, but we both know This moment's ours, let the night bestow Hearts unspoken in the coffee glow Pastel skies melt into the night Candy clouds, the world feels so light We're chasing stars, no need to slow Sugar lights paint the streets a glow Sugar lights, sugar lights, they're shining for us Every color, every hue, a magical trust Sugar lights, sugar lights, they sparkle and play Hold my hand, let's dance through the sweet ballet Bubblegum pink on the corner store sign Lemon drop yellow, your hand in mine Neon whispers, secrets unfold The city's alive, its story told Step by step, we're weaving dreams In a world of cotton candy string Sugar lights, sugar lights, they're shining for us Every color, every hue, a magical trust Sugar lights, sugar lights, they sparkle and play Hold my hand, let's dance through the sweet ballet Mint green laughter, lilac skies Your smile's brighter than fireflies Peppermint kisses, the night is ours We're a constellation among these stars Sugar lights, sugar lights, they're shining for us Every color, every hue, a magical trust Sugar lights, sugar lights, they sparkle and play Hold my hand, let's dance through the sweet ballet Sugar lights, sugar lights, they're shining for us Every color, every hue, a magical trust Sugar lights, sugar lights, they sparkle and play Hold my hand, let's dance through the sweet ballet Footsteps whisper on the glistening street Umbrellas sway still in the rhythm of our beat City lights glow like stars at our feet Crystal raindrops fall, but we don't mind Underneath this shelter, your hand in mine Every drop's a melody, soft and kind Crystal raindrops fall and the world unwinds The air is cool, but your smile feels warm Rain taps a tune that we both transform Your laugh's a fire in this gentle storm Close enough to hear your heart Closer still, we're worlds apart Crystal raindrops fall, but we don't mind Underneath this shelter, your hand in mine Every drop's a melody, soft and kind Crystal raindrops fall and the world unwinds Puddles ripple as we step in time Each reflection's a fleeting rhyme Moments like this, rare and sublime